On the May 5th, 2025, St. Clair Shores, City Council to order. Abby, please call the roll.
Mayor Walby?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Karen?
Here.
Councilmember Frederick?
Present.
Councilmember Rubello?
Here.
And Councilmember Rusi?
Here.
Councilmember Vitale has asked to be excused.
Moved to excuse.
Support by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick, to excuse Councilman Vitale. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then we have the city attorney, Mr. Erie, who usually sits to the right of me, is not feeling his best, so we put him in the bullpen. Penalty box.
Penalty box.
Alrighty. We, it says here we have proclamation's presentations, two, we actually have five, so before we get to audience participation, we've got a couple of more that we have added on to the agenda. But we will start with the postal service, the food drive this Saturday, May 10th, 2025. Ron, how are you?
Good, Mr. Mayor. How are you this evening?
Very good. Nice to see you.
Thank you all for humoring me once again this year. My name is Ron Zaleski. I am the president of the Michigan State Association of Letter Carriers. I've been a city carrier in St. Clair Shores for 27 years, the last four of which I've had the honor of serving City Hall and the neighborhoods surrounding City Hall. And I'm here today to talk about the food drive. First, I'd like to introduce Doug Damm, who's going to be taking over for me. As we talked last year, I'm sneaking up on retirement. It actually looks like it'll be the end of this month if all goes according to plan.
Congratulations.
Yes, yeah, way to go.
We're here to talk about the Letter Carrier's food drive. It is the single biggest food, one-day food drive in the world. Over, since we began this in the 90s, we've raised almost 2 billion pounds of food across the country. And last year in St. Clair Shores, it was around 65,000 pounds. All the food that we collect in St. Clair Shores goes to the Macomb Food Program where they sort it and redistribute it out to food banks across the area. Basically, we want to make sure that nobody gets too many green beans and not enough cans of corn, so they sort it all for us. The first and best thing that people can do to help is on Saturday, put a fat, a bag of non-perishable food right by your mailbox. We're going to come pick it up. My colleagues and I really look forward to this day every year because it's a labor of love for us. It gives us the opportunity to help the neighborhoods that we service every day. I mean, the truth of the matter is, is we get to know our customers. Some of those customers are struggling. It's not been an easy time economically, pretty much throughout COVID through now. And it's great to know that we have the opportunity to help them. Nobody deserves to be hungry in a land of plenty like the United States, and this is how we make sure that that doesn't happen. Another way that you can help is you can come visit either myself or Doug at the St. Clair Shores Post Office at Nine Mile and Greater Mac on Saturday, starting around noon. And we'll be bringing food in, sorting it, and sending it off on trucks. Council members will be there. I know I've got some commitments from some folks. And we look forward to seeing everybody who wants to participate come down and help with this worthy cause. And again, I just want to thank the City of St. Clair Shores Council and the mayor for being so supportive of this endeavor that we've taken on as servants of the community. It just gives us one more chance to serve. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Just to highlight, it's this Saturday, Ron, so right before the social district, we're gonna, we're gonna have a bag of non-perishable foods out on your patio, out on your porch there for the United States Post Office to pick it up here in St. Clair Shores.
Thank you very much. That's exactly correct.
Fantastic. Thanks again for all your hope. And Doug Damm, which is, he'll be taking it over, and he's part of our Parks and Rec, so it's only fitting. The person that volunteers already is going to be part of this, so thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Item B is the 2025 Music on the Lake Concert Series. Here's, we're gonna kick it off here, and I know, I don't know who's coming up. We've got the Activities Committee. We've got Henry Bowman here, Carl Schwartzwaller, who's on the Activities Committee, and of course, many of the individuals. I don't, let's, let's get them up here, too. Henry, we got Jason Goodman of Pettiprin here. We got Todd Hyatt there of
Trader Todd.
Trader Tods. We have CJ Wolf, A Little Blue Book. We've got Rick Burgess here of BAS Securities. We got Mike Agnello. So we got a, we got a whole group of people. I did all the introductions for you. Sorry, Henry, but it's important. This is one of our, this is one of our great events. We get thousands of people. And if we, if we didn't have the people behind you who support this, and, and I, my hat's off to, of course, for Pettiprin, who have been here for more than 30 years, have been supporting this. It's just a great event in our community, which kicks off here. So you take it away, Henry.
All right. Well, we are really happy to introduce the band lineup tonight. We've been having constant calls at the Civic Arena. They're looking for the lineup. But I also want to point out that these people are what really make it happen for us. And everybody coming out to the concerts, I know they're all looking forward to it. So we got some great bands coming up. I wanted to go through them real quick. We open up on June 4th with the Blue Water Kings. Then we come up with Bernadette Catherine and the Lonely Days Band, which has performed quite often with other events that we've had going on. I think you'll enjoy her. Kathleen Murray and the Groove Council will be coming up right after that. Then we have Main Street Drive. They've performed at Music on the Lake in previous years. We're really looking for, looking forward coming back. On July 9th, there's a brand-new band that come out here, Zang. They're a classic rock band, and I think you'll, everybody will really enjoy them. After that is Rockstar. And I'll tell you what, Rockstar, there won't be a blade of grass that won't be somebody sitting on it for Rockstar. It's really a great show. Then we have Stone Blossoms, which is Uncle Cracker's band. And usually, he doesn't show up, but you never know. So, and then we have Captain Fantastic, Ron Voss. He does a great Alton John at the show. We also have Sunset Boulevard right after him. And then we finish off the year with Family Tradition. New sponsors this year, I really want to make always Pettiprin is always just great partners of ours. New sponsors, we have Music on the Lake, but they're not new in our community. Number one, Michael Agnello. He does so much for our community. We really appreciate him. So, thank you, Michael. Rick Burgess is back again, of course. We love Rick. He does so much for our community. Thank you, Rick. We also, he's trying to hide. We have Trader Todd and his wife, Virginia. They've stepped up to be sponsors for Music by the Lake. Also, we have CJ, CJ Wolf from The Little Blue Book, which is brand-new for us. So really, the community is stepping forward. And of course, always, we, and CJ Wolf's partner?
Mark Ficcone.
Mark Ficcone. Okay, thank you. And then Jason Goodman. So we really appreciate everybody. We're looking forward to a great show this year. And we lead off at June 4th, 7:00 at night, and looking forward to seeing everybody coming out there.
Fantastic. Ooh, summer's here.
Yeah, we're, we're excited. Again, we, we can't thank enough the sponsors. Without them, we don't have the event. And it's just been a great tradition. We get thousands of people that come here. We get probably, on good days, Henry, 60, 70 boats, maybe 80 boats on, on a good day out in the water. It's just, it's a fantastic event in St. Clair Shores.
Yeah, we send a signal out to the boat, to car radios, so they can be on their boat and be able to listen to the concert. So it's really nice.
Once again, thank, thank you, everyone, for your support. We really appreciate it. Mark Ficcone, is Joe Ficcone your brother?
Yes, sir.
Oh, boy.
And about eight other ones, too.
Oh, yeah. Okay. And then I did, and you mentioned, I, I didn't say Virginia, but Virginia and Todd together. And Virginia's been helping us with the whole of the Nautical Mile there and the construction. So we appreciate all that support. Again, thanks, everyone. We really appreciate it. Hopefully, we'll see, see many of you out here, starting June 4th, to all of them, all of these concerts. So thanks again.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Just real quickly, I'm Carl Schwartzwaller. I'm the vice chair of the Activities Committee. And besides all these wonderful people who helped to make this all go for us, I would like to extend my thanks to City Council for their support. I'd also like to extend my thanks to our Parks and Rec Department, who makes that park look really good every Wednesday night, and does a fantastic job of getting people in and out of there, and cleaning it up afterwards. And to Henry and to Rob for all their dedication to making this go. And to all the people who came well before I was ever on the Activities Committee, who started this, as the mayor said, many, many years ago. So there's been a long lineage of people who have stepped up and volunteered to make this all go for the citizens of this city. And I think you're all in for a real great summer of memories. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, so item, item three is, we got the veterans here. Where they're gonna, they announce a picture over here at the VFW. Got Dale Verhagey and Brian Dopke here, two veterans. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, sir. My name's Dale Verhagey, along with Brian Dopke.
Open that mic, Dale.
Sorry. I'm with the VFW past Senior Vice Commander years ago. But we, Brian brought this up. We did a photo shoot back in 2012, and he wanted to redo that again because, you know, it's time to. And we're gonna do a photo shoot at the VFW, May 18th, Sunday at 6:00 PM. All St. Clair Shores veterans are welcome to come to get in on this opportunity. And we do have a rain day, in case it does rain that day, on the 24th of May, which is Saturday at 6:00 PM. I hope to see all veterans out there to make this happen. It's for a good cause for all the veterans in St. Clair Shores. I'd like to pass it over to Brian, please.
Good evening. As Dale mentioned, not sure who's responsible for this, but back in 2012, this was in the city calendar in November for Veterans Day. And my dad called me up, and I attended this event. And it was a great showing. I know my dad had this picture on his refrigerator probably till 2015. And it was just, was, I think it'd be great to have that back in the calendar again for, for the month of November. So just as Dale mentioned the date, I'm gonna mention one more thing while I'm up here, change the subject a little bit. But the parade's coming up on the 25th. Love the parade. I'm there every year. But a hidden gem that we have is 9:00 that morning at Veterans Memorial Park, is the memorial service. And it's often low attendance. And it's a beautiful event. We have the St. Clair Shores Choir there. Beautiful, beautiful event. I promise you, show up once and, and you'll be back again. So thank you for your time and hope to see all of that's out there.
Brian, thanks for coming. Now Dale, mention the time again, one more time, to get it, where you leave?
May 18th, 6:00 PM or 1800 hours. If it does rain that day, May 24th, which is a Saturday, 6:00 PM, 1800 hours.
Right, after Rus' post.
Yep.
All right.
One more thing. Randall did mention if anybody shows up before, wants to stick around after, the lounge will be open and we'll all meet there.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, or fourth on here for presentations is Mike Drew Lever, here of the Waterfront Environmental Committee. He's gonna promote the cleanup here on the, on the 18th. A lot happening here on the 18th. May's always busy, really, May is always busy in St. Clair Shores. Mike, thanks for coming to promote this. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Mayor. And I'm heading straight to work to the airport after this. So I'm not speaking for my company. I'm here on behalf of the Waterfront Environmental Committee. The 18th, our 30th Annual Water, Coast Cleanup, and already shaping up to be one of our biggest ones in, in recent history. Over 100 pre-registered already, so it's shaping up to be a great day. And, and I say it every year, it's gonna be wonderful weather that day. Always works out very nicely. So plan on it. 8:00 AM at the Jefferson Yacht Club, it'll be there, we'll start out there with the food and registration and announcements, and then we'll get, we'll punch out to the targeted areas, come back for lunch afterwards. And food and drinks will be supported, be given, supported greatly by our sponsors. The target areas is, is the Veterans Beach and Blossom Heath Beach and Pier. Chapitons still in construction, so we can't go over there. However, it's worth mentioning, I organized a nice little tour, and we had a few of our residents go through there. So I really appreciate Macomb County helping us out over there. Four things I wanted to mention, our goals this year, we want to increase the student and HOA participation. After 2020, we kind of, we saw a decrease in that, and we've been struggling to get back up. So focusing on that, we've already had some great responses so far. We're starting the Clean Marina Program certification. The City Marina has been, been very enthusiastic about participating there and Trader Tods as well. So thank you very much. Lastly, is the Storm Drain Medallion Project. And so before we did stenciling, the stenciling was, was a temporary, you know, it displayed temporarily, and it was laborious. This is more of a, a long-term and also sustainable option. If we have to redo it, it's aluminum, so we can put it there. So lastly, Facebook and Eventbrite. That's where you register. Again, it's one of our largest ones. I hope you all can attend. I got a few responses already. Fantastic. We'll have a representative from Macomb Public Works as well showing up. So hopefully, talk about, no, hopefully, but we'll talk about to the progress of our chapitons. That's all I have. Thanks so much for your time.
Mike, thank you for coming. Appreciate you promoting. And then the last but not least, Erica Bradberry of CARE. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, City Council Members. My name is Erica Bradberry, and I am a Certified Prevention Specialist and a Program Manager at CARE of Southeastern Michigan. We are a substance use prevention, recovery, and treatment nonprofit that recently moved from Fraser to Roseville. And since 1977, our mission has been to strengthen resiliency in people through prevention, education, and services that improve the quality of life. I had the pleasure to meet Councilwoman Burgess at the Waterfront Environmental Committee, as well as the other members with my colleague Jade Cruz a couple of weeks ago. And she was very kind to invite me here today to speak to you about two important things. The first thing I came here to speak to you about is CARE Southeastern Michigan's new family-based program called Family Solutions. This is going to be a skill-building program for families or caregivers with children ages seven to 17 that have been impacted by a loved one's opioid use and/or incarceration. This program will help to develop skills involved in child caregiving bonding, setting firm, clear boundaries, and monitoring children's emotional well-being and activities to stay that they, see that they always stay in alcohol and drug-free environments. So this program is going to be an 11-week skill-building class that we host that will also have an in-home skill-building component, case management component as well. So the families will come to our CARE main office. They'll receive a class and a meal each week. And then our case management team that accesses the facilitators and family coaches will then meet with the families each week to practice the skills that they're learning, as well as connect them to any family resources that they might need to improve their family quality of life. So we're very excited to be opening our programming to a new set, a new population of people that have been impacted again by their loved ones, either opioid use or incarceration. And then I'm also here to talk to you today about the Shores Network for Action and Prevention. That is a community coalition group here in St. Clair Shores that is made up of community members, such as parents, and school, school administration, business owners, and other individuals that want to see substance-free communities for youth, as well as safer communities for people struggling with mental health and substance use challenges. The Shores Network for Action and Prevention meets the first Thursday of the month from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. They meet hybridly, so you can either attend via Zoom or in-person. Senator Hertel has been lovely to donate meeting space for us. So when it is available, right at 28800 Harbor Avenue for the in-person component as well. So we're just encouraging anybody in St. Clair Shores, if you would like to be involved in the coalition, I can leave some flyers here for anybody. You can also look for the Shores Network for Action and Prevention on Facebook, as well as CARE Southeastern Michigan on Facebook, to get in more information about joining. And thank you so much for giving your time tonight.
It's my pleasure. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. So item three is gonna be audience participation. But just before that, will someone wants to leave? This is your chance, or you can, you're more than willing to stay the entire meeting, but if you want to pop out, you can. Okay, there you go.
They're considering it.
They're voting out.
And you always leave whenever you want throughout the meeting, too. That's okay.
The doors lock. You're stuck.
The way you said it, Ken.
All right, thank you. Item three, Abby, is audience participation on agenda items. The two-minute time, time limit to speak on any of the agenda items.
We do not have any.
Okay. With that, item four is bid, contracts, purchase orders. 4A is approval, request for approval of the Nine Mile Road Restriping and Signal Adjustment Project. Denise Pike, CDI Director. Good evening, Denise.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may recall at the impetus of Councilman Karen and Mayor Protam Rubello, we coordinated a meeting with the Macomb County Road Commission about traffic signal at Greater Mac and Nine Mile Road. The intent of the meeting was to discuss a delayed signal, but the Macomb County Road Commission actually came up with an alternate idea, which was reducing the eastbound lanes, sorry, reducing westbound lanes of Nine Mile from two lanes to one, and creating a left turn lane that would run from Jefferson to Cavalier Drive. On the screen, I actually will let Councilman Karen, I think, talk about this.
You can just go to the next pages.
Okay. So this is the intersection of Nine Mac Drive and Nine Mile. So you can see that there would be one westbound lane, one turn lane, left turn lane, and then there would be two eastbound lanes. The two eastbound lanes would not be reconfigured. Next slide. At Greater Mac, you will see that, again, there would be one lane going westbound. That would be for both straight traffic, straight-through traffic and a right lane, right-hand turn, and then a left turn lane at the light. And this has been a cause for concern for a very long time. It is a scary intersection, or can be a scary intersection. And Macomb County has suggested that this might be a way to alleviate some of the ambiguity about whether or not a car is turning left or going straight. Next slide. This is actually at Cavalier. Again, same thing, the left turn lane. And then just beyond Cavalier Drive, the road would actually merge back into two lanes going westbound and two lanes coming eastbound, just past Cavalier. So the county has said that would, that would take two things. It would take restriping Nine Mile, and it would take signal adjustments. What you have in the packet this evening is the cost of the signal adjustments that Macomb County, if you recall, Macomb County Department of Roads maintains our traffic signals. The cost to adjust the traffic signals is $98,968.42. That would come out of our signal maintenance line item budget. And it is within a contract that we already hold with Macomb County Department of Roads for signal maintenance. Sorry, there is also, getting to add the actual, I guess there isn't a total in here.
The striping, right, I think it's $119,667.
Correct.
Because the striping's another $20,669.50, so.
Correct. Yes. And the striping, we could cost that out through PK on our own, or we could have the county handle the entire project for us for that amount of money.
What's the intent to have PK evaluated?
Correct. Our, our option would be to have PK evaluate, find out our unit prices, find out what, PK's already been here for us, but if they're in the area, if our unit prices are cheaper without paying the overhead, that's the route we would choose. It's the same contractor that was the lowest bid for us and the county. So it would just be utilizing the cheapest of the two prices.
Timeline for this to be completed with the county is an estimate right now, but we're thinking, yeah, this fiscal year, so before June 30th.
Excellent. Questions, comments? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. So once they get started, how long will this take for them to take it from start to finish? Do we know?
About a day.
So, very quick.
Very quick.
Okay, so just in case anyone was worried about another lengthy road project, this is just restriping. It's not actually construction. It's just restriping.
Correct. Restriping and signal adjustments.
And how will we let residents know about the changes?
We can do that in a couple of ways. We can do it through social media, certainly. We put that through our Communications Department. We can let individuals know through the, the Merchants Association, so the Nine Mac Merchants Association. And we can do it through the Nautical Mile Merchants Association, because people are coming through both of those districts. Those are the three main ways I can think of.
Because once people, they'll see it, but it's also one of those things where if you're used to maneuvering around it in a certain way, to have a change just overnight, like literally.
Right.
It would be good to get the word out so people know what to expect. In terms of the cost estimate, do we have, I see it's broken down material, equipment, labor. There's also a line for other. You looked at the breakdown for what other is, and it just says miscellaneous. I was wondering if we had, if it's not material, equipment, or labor, what would the other be encapsulating?
I am not 100% certain, but I would imagine that it could be maybe use of, they'll have to actually be on-site, so could be some traffic control. That would be a question that I can ask the county and get back to you.
Okay, I was just curious. I was looking at the paperwork, and I, I looked for the page, and it just says, the, the description is miscellaneous, which isn't much of a description when it's already called other. And there's an 18% overhead. What would that, what does that go toward?
That's the Macomb County Road Commission Administration.
Okay, so that's administering a fee from the county?
Yes.
Okay. Related, I saw they put some new barricades up around the Nine Mac area for safety purposes?
I, I actually haven't been there, so.
The city did, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
We, we, my sister and I drove around it when we noticed it, so we drove around it just to try out. And they're all okay, except turning, my sister wanted me to pass you. As turning left off of Cavalier Drive going into downtown St. Clair Shores, the barricades make it hard to see oncoming traffic.
Okay.
So you might want to take a look at that and see if those could be adjusted to make it a little bit easier if you're making the turn left off of Cavalier Drive going into downtown St. Clair Shores turn.
We can look at that tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Burgess?
Is there going to be a left turn arrow, green arrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes.
That's it.
Mr. Karen, thank you. No, just to, you know, thank the Macomb County Road Commission, and Adam Merchant, who's actually a St. Clair Shores resident, and John Abraham, that brought the solution back to the city. You know, Councilman Rubello and I, you know, we expressed concerns of how we could just change the directional lighting. And they had safety concerns with what we were proposing, and they came back with the plan.
They did.
And that. And so I think it's great that they, they're helping us out, bring back some of these ideas to make this area safer. And I do think also, once we get whoever ends up inhabiting the old Kroger building, we get the St. Mary's redevelopment between the multiple businesses that are going to be in there, having a left turn lane in that section nine miles is gonna be very helpful.
Yes, it will.
Going forward. So that's another big improvement that'll be in the area as a part of all this reconfiguration. So, so I think this is great, and get a quick turnaround time with the county on this, and the next month or so will be awesome.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rubello?
As discussed with Councilman Karen, and I think the majority of everybody here agreed with that, that, that situation at Nine Mile and Mac was, it was a hazard as far as people driving. There were some really blind turns in there. There have been plenty of times where people just sort of, they go through it, and hopefully, they, they don't get hit. And there's been a lot of near misses, and this has been going on for decades, really. So I'm glad we finally are able to address, address the problem. And hopefully, it helps somebody out. out, and I think things will be good. Day one is probably going to be a little bit tough for the drivers, so I don't know if we have any alternative ways to sort of put a heads up with everybody that would be different from how it would be the rest of the time. So maybe we can think about, you know, the first week, because people are going to be sort of like, hey, what's going on here? Especially people who've been here, lived a long time, so it's funny how much these, the traffic lights cost, you know? You never really realize that. That's the majority of the issue right here as far as money goes.
Absolutely. It was sticker check.
With that, I think this has been a long time coming, and I will move to approve of the cost to reconfigure the Nine Mile Road between Jefferson and just west of Cavalier Drive.
Support by Mr. Rabello, supported by Mr. Karen, and the cost is $119,667. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four B is request to sign the MDOT contract for Greater Mac Avenue. City Engineer Mike Freckleton.
Good evening. Now on to a lengthy construction project. The, I mean, I believe we're all aware of the tip project that we have for the concrete patching of Greater Mac between 12 Mile and 13 Mile. What's before you tonight is just a standard contract that MDOT likes the cities to have signed in accompanying a resolution from City Council, essentially just supporting that, you know, we do have the funding, our, you know, our 20% match funding, and we'll honor that. So the cost participation for us for this project is, you know, estimated to be $276,718. The project was actually let by MDOT on Friday, and so we are still waiting to see the results of that, but we are optimistic that it will come in lower than the estimated cost, so.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. And Mike, in terms of this project, Greater Mac from 12 Mile to 13 Mile, this is basically a heavy patching project, correct?
Yep.
It's not a full reconstruction, but much like Masonic was.
Stevens.
Take down a lane, patch, let it sit for a week, take down the next lane, do the patching over there.
Yes.
Okay. And on that, is any follow-up? We had a question in the budget meeting last week. Have we had funds allocated for this project in the current fiscal year, and we had funds allocated in the next fiscal year? Did we get clarification?
So the funds in the current fiscal year were for, like, the design engineering services and, you know, and other things like that to get the project going, and then the funds being allocated for next year are just the, are like the construction inspection administration, and then our actual cost share with MDOT.
Okay. So the engineering part of it was still going to be $400,000? Because we have to pay the engineering ourselves, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So we had $400,426, correct?
They're both roughly about the same. I don't remember the exact.
Okay.
But they're in both budgets.
Yeah. So I think initially it was just, we probably had around $400,425, just because we weren't entirely sure on when the project might start and the schedule, and so now that we have that nailed down more, we were able to take into account the remaining consulting cost as well as the participation cost.
Okay. So I guess I would ask, once we get the final bids back from MDOT, know what that cost is going to be? Just give us an email.
Sure.
Of the total cost breakdown.
Sure.
You know, between our match, the engineering, and the construction administration part of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I'm glad it's not a total recon. When I drove through there today, it's mostly the northern end.
Mm-hmm.
Of Greater Mac. And I know that we did some other work a few years back, mostly in the southern end, so I'm glad we're going to finish that up, especially for the residents that are on that street.
Yeah.
And the tons of traffic, it seems to go through there every day. So I will make a motion to approve the resolution for MDOT contract number 255175 and authorize the city manager to sign it.
Support by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen. Question by Mr. Rabello.
Yeah, I just want to know why this section of Greater Mac? Well, how did we choose this section?
So, I mean, this was made prior to my time here, but that section of Greater Mac is pretty poor, and especially as Councilman Frederick said, on that north end, they're just, they're failing pavement joints, there's a lot of just, there's a lot of patches, like a lot of cold patch going, and the amount of traffic that that area gets, I mean, it's a two-lane road, but it also has off-street parking. It's, you know, a primary corridor in the city, just a ton of residential streets that, you know, connect to it, so it's, just given the condition and, you know, traffic and all of those things to consider, it's a pretty primary candidate.
Just a point, I guess, I want to make, as far as people being able to back out or pull out onto Greater Mac, how are they, what's our plan for them parking? I don't know how many homes there are, there might be some boats in the driveways, and, you know, pulling back out onto Greater Mac might be pretty difficult.
Yeah.
What arrangements do we have for those homeowners?
I mean, the contractor will work with all of the homeowners. Obviously, we'll have everyone, you know, everyone will be notified if they have the potential to lose access to their driveway for any extended period of time. Thankfully, in that area, there are plenty of side streets that people can be able to park on without having to walk, you know, too far from their home, so that'll probably, that will probably be one way to remedy that. People will just be able to park on side streets. We're going to maintain access to people's driveways as long as we can, you know, pretty much, unless there's new concrete that's kearing in front of it, people will be able to access their driveways, and, you know, we can, again, the contractor will do everything they can to, you know, keep everything safe.
So is that something that police are going to have to work with with some of the residents in case they have to park out in the street now?
I mean, you know, we let police and, we let police and fire know of these, and, you know, when people do have to park on side streets, we let, you know, we let the police know, like, hey, you know, there, people have to do this, please don't give them tickets if they're there overnight or things like that. So we make sure that, we make sure everyone's covered on that.
Yeah, I just sort of, I took a ride like Councilman Frederick's did, and I was going, it seems the southern part of the road isn't as bad as the northern part, but we're going to do the whole thing.
Yeah. I mean, when you do a project like that where the whole road's the same age, and especially in one where we're getting federal funding, may as well do the whole stretch and take care of what you can.
About 80/20. So you said about, about 80/20?
Yes, about, it's about 80/20.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a $1.5 million project. We're kicking into $73,000, and federal funds are covering like $1.23 million, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And it's, it's administered through MDOT?
Yes.
Okay, so will MDOT be in charge of the, it said that this was including MDOT bid letting, will they be in charge of the project then?
No, we're, so we're still in charge of the project. It's what's considered a local agency project, so it's essentially a project that the city runs itself, but just has to go through all the MDOT standards and everything because we get the federal funding for them. So it's really more the, like, the design and the bid letting and things like that are handled by MDOT, but the construction is, it's inspected, it's administered by the city, and then we just have to report to MDOT accordingly.
Okay, great, so we'll still be overseeing the construction work?
Yes.
And still be responsive to residents who have questions or issues with what's going on?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. And do we know, I know it was in, so MDOT bid letting on May 2nd, do we know when we are targeting this project to begin?
We are planning for it to begin in late June, after schools get out, just so we don't affect any bus routes or anything like that. So ideally, it starts in late June.
Okay, great. And I assume the city attorney, it looks like a very pro forma contract, the city attorney has reviewed this and signed off, correct?
That's correct. It's a standard.
Contract for these types of matters, we've seen them many times.
Okay, great. You do sound bad, Bob. You do sound sick.
We still love you, though.
We still have a penalty.
Oh, sorry you're here tonight, then. Okay, thank you.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, seconded by Mr. Karen to approve the resolution for the MDOT contract. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mike, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Have a good night.
Just by the way, we have been working on doing the south end of Greater Mac, too. That has, we've been, we've been putting effort there to get that taken care of, but it didn't get passed at the last one, but hopefully near the end of the decade, we will be, we're trying, we know. So we got one side, we got the north end of Greater Mac, and we're going to try to get from Cavalier to the south end, so we're working on that, too. Everyone's competing always. They're always competing for these dollars. When you have an 80/20, when you have 80/20, I mean, there's a lot of competition, and especially with the townships and stuff, so, and I know Mike's working on it, so we appreciate that. Mayor? Yes.
A little history thing here.
Okay.
The original name of Greater Mac was the Kirchville Superhighway. It was supposed to connect Kirchville and Detroit to the thumb.
It makes sense why then the bus was called the Kirchville Deanhurst, when I would take it and go to St. Joan. It's called the Kirchville Deanhurst.
That's it.
Okay. All right, Mr. Rabello, thank you. Four C, request approval of the Veterans Memorial Park Beach Revitalization. Rob Spinazzola, Parks Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here tonight to request your approval to begin work on reestablishing the Veterans Memorial Park Beach area. So as we informed you at the budget hearing last week, admin was set to meet with Eggel the next morning, which we did. At that meeting, we established that we would have to find the ordinary high water mark and try to reclaim any existing land behind that high water mark without a permit from Eggel. So basically, they tell us what the high water mark is, we get a survey out there to mark that off for us, and we can establish, reestablish that land behind that mark. Anything beyond that mark into the waters would then have to fall under permit and most likely not get approved anyways. So after meeting them, we had AEW come out, immediately survey the area, and after that, Landscape Services came out to discuss the project. They were the contractor that previously completed this same style of project, the first time when we were trying to prevent the water from claiming some of the parkland, if you guys recall, many years ago.
Yep.
Water was washing actually up over the path there, so we're a little familiar with this style of project. Project would consist of reestablishing the grass area above the existing barrier, create a step-down area to the new beach area, and adding in a new retaining wall similar to what we did prior at the ordinary high water mark line. We're bringing this quickly as there is an urgency to get this project started and completed before the waters start to rise this spring. Once they do start to rise, we cannot, I guess, reclaim any of that land, because then it becomes government waters again. So that's the gist of the project, and we'll take any questions.
So we've had it already surveyed, and the ordinary high water mark actually turned out to be almost really right where the current tide is, right there, correct?
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. What's the height from the grass area to the step-down to the beach?
I'm going to estimate it. It's quite a bit. If you, if you go down to where the ordinary high water mark line is and then look back towards the grass line, I would, I would guess it was around six to seven feet, maybe.
At least.
It's quite a bit. It's quite a bit of a drop-down from that grass path area up top to down to the beach line is quite a, quite a ways down.
Okay, and it says we'll be adding steps?
Yeah, so you can see where it kind of marked off, so really what we're going to do is most likely it'll be just the same type of rock that we're using, just impacted and further to create a step-down.
Well, we want, like, people to go on the beach, then?
We will, yes.
Okay.
That is, that's the ultimate goal, is to get the beach usable again.
That's, okay. Well, we have, I guess, made sure it's, the line of demarcations are invisible, so we won't have people, like, so they know there are steps, they know, you know, they're not falling down.
Yeah, we can put some signage up to indicate.
Yeah, signage would be good, and maybe, I'm not sure about the grade, but would it be possible to make one set of steps, like a ramp?
We could, we could look into it.
I'm not sure about how grading would be.
Yeah, I don't want to.
But can we look into that?
Promise it until we meet out there, maybe with the contractor, and see how we have to grade the material, but I don't think it's a terrible idea to look into.
Okay, cool. And when, do we know when we would be scheduling the work, when the work would be done? I know you said times of the essence, which is why this was added to the.
I don't have a start date, but assuming this gets approved, if it does get approved tonight, I would make the phone call right way tomorrow and see when we can get started, because we don't want that water line to move.
Right.
His goal is to start the week of the 12th, pending weather and everything going on, but his goal is to start the week of the 12th and be done before Memorial Day.
Okay, so will this impact the North Coast cleanup, then, of the beach?
Yes.
It will, to a degree. Paul is going to be out there to try to help clean up some of, so to the far right area, there's some of that heavy rock that had kind of fallen from the area. They are going to take care and clean up all of that. They're also going to try to be repurposing where the sand area is, where the beach is, and where the, as you can kind of even see in this picture, I mean, I'm not sure how, you can definitely tell it's there, where the logs and then where there's, the marsh has kind of all came up, that will still be for the nautical cleanup, and the nautical cleanup along the whole rock line that goes across, that's still not going to be touched at all. So there's going to be plenty of work out there.
Okay, so yeah, so I just want to make sure that administration's in communication with the waterfront, yeah, okay, great. So they just know how many volunteers they'll need and the expectations. Okay, cool. And Landscape Services did the initial work a few years ago, so it made sense to continue with them as a contractor for this.
Correct.
Okay, great.
I think it's the right way to move with a project like this.
Especially given the time constraints, too. This is something we want and need to have done quickly, so.
Yes, I mean, the goal, right, we continue, and if the water wasn't even receding more, we'd try to get further out there, right? I mean, the goal is to get it as far as east as we can, and hopefully then we get.
Well, I remember when we were first talking about this a few years back, the plan was going to be to incrementally move the bricks and that, you know, the stones, and now the fact that we can reclaim this much in, you know, one type of, you know.
Yes.
One, the next increment of this, that's amazing, because initially, yours is, we just keep moving it, and now the fact we can do this much this year is amazing.
And we did talk about moving the existing wall, but in the end, it does not make any sense to do that, and leave that there as a nice barrier to reestablish that land up top and then put the new wall in, so now we're creating an even bigger beach area.
Yeah, this is nice. We were, like, we have been talking about that this would be done in many segments over 10, 15 years or something, the fact we can do this much now. Not only will save money, but we'll have a greater impact quicker, so.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So one, probably one of the only advantages of the water receding, I mean, we're dealing with all of the issues with the dredging and that kind of stuff that we are able to claim, but I do want to be specific here, too. This does not include the cost of sand. The reason that we did it separately is we have a sand contract with EPW that we achieve sand. We'll be able to save money with our governmental contract than hiring LSI to actually purchase that sand and haul it, so we'll be utilizing our contract with, I think it's Crossroad Trucking who has our hauling contract, and then also getting the sand. It does include LSI dispersing the sand once it gets there.
But just out of the material cost.
It does not have the material cost.
Okay.
So the material, all the other stuff, so the big boulders and the soap behind it, it just does not have the sand or the, like, the crushed gravel that will go to help level it when they put the rocks in, so that will be separate.
Mr. Rabello?
And we're going to grass seed up there.
Yes.
Okay, the green part up there. Obviously, it's going to be good for our beach. We've got to beat the deadline for Todd and Virginia's music on the lake, so hopefully it doesn't, you know, run into all that stuff. So with that, I will motion to approve the Veterans Memorial Park Revitalization Landscape Services, Inc., in the amount of $69,425.
I'll support that.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Ms. Rusi. Mr. Karen.
Thank you. Yeah, just a comment. Thanks to the administration for moving on this. I know I brought up moving the stones for the last few years as the water has receded. And I know I brought in pictures of how far it receded a few meetings ago as part of my council comments. So the fact that we got this turned around and potentially could have this done by Memorial Day is great. So appreciate administration working with the contractors to move this forward and bring this to us. Thank you.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Ms. Rusi to approve the Veterans Park Beach Revitalization with Landscape Services in the amount of $69,425. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, thank you. Item five, consent agenda.
Moved to approve, support.
Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Item six is updates and files from prior council meetings. Mr. Lent.
Mr. Vitale asked the trade-in value for the potential or potential alternates used for the old light rescue truck at the fire department. Currently, the fire department did not have another use within the department for the existing truck. It also right now is not currently promising any trade. They have reached out to other departments to try to find another use. If they're not able to find another use that is advantageous for the city, we will be looking at exploring an auction when we go with our vehicles and put it up for an auction sale. And that money will go back to the motor pool to be able to purchase additional vehicles. Mr. Frederick requested that the residential feedback be incorporated into project evaluations. The residential input will be documented during each project and will be included in the evaluation discussion. Mr. Karen noted reoccurring potholes on Overlake Street near St. Joan, particularly ahead of their annual food truck festival in the third week of May. He requested that the large potholes be filled in advance. The potholes on Overlake will be filled by DPW. We'll put a reminder on the calendar to check them prior to the St. Joan of Arcs event. The city engineer visited Overlake Street and is currently discussing options for joint repair as part of our local street patching program in the future as well. We did have three residents. Patrick Dennis at 22716 Avalon reported cracking in his sidewalk that was poured a few years ago. This section of sidewalk is included in the punch list for replacement and the contractor is scheduled to start work in mid-May. Molly Donaldson, a 21230 Briar Court, addressed concerns regarding a growing cat problem in her neighborhood. CDI will work with Macomb County Animal Control to remove the feral cat colony and the code violations. And I will report more on that during my council manager report. And then La Jean Maxwell, located at 20707 Elizabeth, raised concern about a large tree in her front yard causing damage. The forestry department will evaluate the tree at this property. And I can actually address that at the end of the week after we sent this out. They did go out, addressed the tree, and the tree is actually scheduled for.
And then just an update regarding the Kroger there on Nine Mile Road. The contractor has walked through, the developer has walked through with Amazon. And at this point, they are to take it over. They haven't taken it totally yet from the developer, but they have walked through it and are evaluating, making sure everything meets their needs. But we'll get back to you. But we're getting, I think, some movement here. And I guess I can't say that we're not getting a little excited here. But again, as you see the outside of that building there, it is, it looked, it is, finally looks good. And again, the developer has walked through with Amazon. So we're waiting to see what the next steps are with them. So hopefully progress is coming. Yes, Mr. Karen.
On that, just to be clear for the public, the inside is just an empty shell, right?
Yes.
We don't have any interior drawings, interior specs for the inside of it yet. And so until we get that, whatever they want to turn it into, we don't even know what that is until that comes, correct?
Correct. The developer is not tasked with doing that. They were doing the outside of the building and doing some work on the inside, but not interior plans, whatever. Those would come from what we believe would be the occupant of the store.
It's great that there's movement and kind of finality for the outside, but it doesn't mean they're going to be opening in the next few weeks, you know, because they've done that, so just.
Oh, of course not, not in the next two weeks.
Just make sure that's clear.
We, hopefully, we start to see something and we get a lot of questions. So we're trying to be transparent, tell you we think we're getting closer to here, so.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rabello.
Just let us know when we can clap before.
Okay, we can't just yet. With that, we'll move to comments by individual council members. Ms. Burgess, since Mr. Vitale is not here.
All right, just a couple of things tonight since, look at our time, I love it. Get out of here early, enjoy some of the time tonight. Wine on the Water is happening again. It's our second one for the Cool City Committee. It is going to be Saturday, March 31st from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Last year was a complete hit. We were a sellout at 200. We have upped it this year to 300 people can come. It's $40 a person. The admission includes wine samples and two free pours, a charcuterie box, a dessert box, late-night pizza, a live DJ, photo booth, strolling art exhibit from some of our students in our schools, a live DJ, photo booth, I said that all right. And everybody gets a free gift when they're there. We're limited to 300 tickets this year. They must be purchased in advance and get them at the Civic Arena. And you must be 21 to be able to attend. Just want to say that I'm very excited about Social District, but I'm going to leave that to Dave to bring that up. But very excited. It's one of my favorite times of the year is Social District and the music on the lake, all that stuff. Just warms my heart right now. Do want to say that I had absolutely great time at the Memorial Day fundraising pasta dinner that we had here this last Thursday night. And the historical marker was just wonderful. I just really commend the historical committee. That was just a beautiful display, a beautiful speech it was given. I've heard about the history of the VFW and it was really, really interesting to hear it again. If you guys haven't visited it yet, go to the VFW, see that beautiful marker that's there. And of course, we're going to have that veterans photo shoot coming up. So if you're a veteran, make sure that you get more information on that. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Rabello.
All right, set the timer. I'll be under a minute here. Social District starts this Saturday. We have a special guest coming. So hopefully you guys can make it out there, 7 o'clock, okay? So the summer begins at Nine Mile in Mac. Also, I wanted to, well, there's a couple of folks here. Todd in Virginia, thanks for being a sponsor for the music on the lake. I mean, it's wonderful. And the city has always appreciated folks like you that come and step forward and make our events better. So thank you. We have a parade that's Sunday, May 25th. We're still looking for entries. And if they could be military or music, that's even better for everybody. And that is all I have. Everyone have a great day. You got my timer?
John's nodding.
Thank you. Ms. Rusi.
Okay, thank you. Like the mayor said at the beginning of the meeting, it's a busy time of the year in the city, which is fantastic. So just a couple of thank yous to the community for attending all the events we've had so far going on in the community. Lake Shore Drama Club presented just another high school play. Dave was there too. And that's night, it was awesome. Very talented students. They also had a all-district art show at Lake Shore. And that was absolutely beautiful, just to see all the different art made by the littlest kids to the graduating seniors and everyone in between in that district. We had an Arbor Day planting at Rise Apart with the Lake Shore Honor Society. It's funny, you see some other cities that celebrate Arbor Day and they, we planted one tree, we planted two trees. Well, our city planted 26 or 27 trees.
26.
26 trees over at Rise Apart to augment the arborum and the species diversity there. And that was really cool. And sometimes when you get kids who volunteer, sometimes they spend more time, I sound so old saying this, more time on their phones than actually volunteering. But these kids worked. I mean, these kids, start to finish, worked. They didn't even eat the bagels or the doughnuts, wherever they had, till after all the work was done. So they were an awesome group of kids who really, really, really helped us out, gained 26 trees planted like in two hours. And it was, they did a great job. So thank you to the Lake Shore Honor Society, a great group of kids. Community garden prep day, we weeded, we scooped fertilizer, got the community garden right behind Civic Arena ready. Look at their Facebook page, St. Clair Shores Community Garden for volunteer opportunities. It's a really great group of people who are really passionate about helping beautify that little corner and getting some vegetables and flowers growing. Linda mentioned the parade spaghetti fundraiser and the Historical Commission marker dedication to the VFW. That was a great evening and thank you for the community for always stepping up to attend that one. That was wonderful to see how many people really believe in the cause and show up and support the parade and all the volunteers. It was nice to see all the volunteers too. St. Margaret Boy Scout Dinner was April 27th up at St. Margaret, fantastic. Thank you for everyone who attended that and a lot of raffle baskets. I know it was a success. Went to on Saturday, the Special Olympics Area 14 Night, the Races Derby fundraiser. St. Clair Shores had three tables. So St. Clair Shores showed up to support the Special Olympics athletes in Macomb County. St. Clair Shores had three whole tables they're representing. And the organizer from the Night of the Races aspect said he's been attending this one and for, I think, five, six years. He said this was the best-attended and most profitable. Yesterday was also the firemen's and other people climbed, but the fireman climbed first. Fight for the air stair climb for the American Lung Association. Comerica Park's been fundraiser against St. Clair Shores represented with their firemen. They raised over $2,500 for the American Lung Association and climbed 2,100 steps in the upper deck in their full gear. And my sister and I went, because I've always wondered how this was conducted. So we went and watched and cheered some of them on. And literally, they climbed up and down, they snaked up and down all the stairs in the upper deck from start to finish in Comerica Park, 2,100 steps in their full gear, their helmets, everything, their air packs. And it's all for.
I don't know what that feels like.
It's all for charity. Yeah, we, they invited us over to the station one day to try on some of it and do a little circuit training course. And I had a hard time like walking in it and they're climbing 2,100 steps for charity on a Sunday morning to help the American Lung Association, all volunteer work. So it was really nice to see that and nice to see, again, the community step up and support that. Community course was also yesterday. Let's Go to the Movies, fantastic show, a lot of, Cindy worked as a fantastic job. And I think they have a Path to House. I think like every seat basically was full, so a lot of people showed up for that. Figure skating called Aladdin on ice. Again, fantastic performances by the kids. It's amazing what we have in the city if you think about it. They did four shows and one show for charity with the Kiwanis. And then finally, we also had the Hall of Fame Athletic Induction. So congratulations to the inductees, Don Young, David DeVita, Matt Trombley, Don Fowler, and the Lake Shore High School Football Team, '75 to '78, who were our last inductees into the St. Clair Shores Hall of Fame. And thanks to the Parks Department for a wonderful dinner and ceremony. Finally, as we saw at the beginning of this meeting, don't forget the lighter carriers food drive this Saturday. If you wanted to give a few hours of volunteer, I volunteer a lot throughout the community. And I will say this is like my favorite event to volunteer at because it's just a lot of fun storing the food and just seeing all the food come in. You get to climb up in the mail trucks and help empty the mail trucks of all the food and push the big carts around. And it's a lot of fun just to see how generous people are because you know all that food's going to be put to a really, really good cause. Again, Macomb Food Bank, Macomb Food Program right in the community. So don't forget to put your little bag out if you can, come up to the post office. We could definitely use your help storing cans from boxes, from glass, see other random stuff sometimes people give that you have to sort out. One thing I always like to remind people, because I always see this on Facebook and they'll say, I saw somebody else, it wasn't my mail carrier. I saw somebody else pick up my food, was my food stolen? And yeah, I guess it could have been, but it's more likely the fact that a lot of the mail carriers, it's not just them volunteering to do this and help out and carry the food and take the food back to the post office. Some of them get their friends or family to help out and do the routes for them and pick up the food off the porches. So if you see someone in an SUV or something, pick up your food. Don't necessarily run to Facebook and think it was stolen. A lot of times that might be the son, the daughter, the wife, the husband of a mail carrier who is helping out their loved one with this volunteer work. So remember, non-perishable food, boxes, cans. We do take glass, but glass is a pain in the butt to process in the post office because we have to set it aside. So if you give, everything's appreciated, but if you are buying food specifically for this, errata or cans and boxes, please, because those are a lot less delicate and fragile and less likely to get broken in the back of the post office, which always seems to happen with at least one or two jars that afternoon. So thanks for everyone for supporting. Again, this is just the stuff, this is just a part of what's going on. As you heard, there's a lot that's going on this summer. And we do this and we're able to do this and because the community steps up and supports these things. So thank you to everyone who has stepped up and volunteered and put these events on it and these events. That's it.
Thank you.
I was not a minute, but I took Dave's time.
It was 10 minutes. No, just, Mr. Karen.
Thank you. First, just to remind council, our next Historical Commission markers dedication is next Monday, May 12th at 6:30 at Bob Marito's Bakery over in Greater Mac. So please, hopefully everyone can attend. I know the Historical Commission greatly appreciates council attending their marker dedications. They're out there, so. I'm sure there'll be some accommodation. There'll be some accommodation, I'm sure.
6:30.
So first, a few issues before I kind of go to more fun things. In reading through all the committee minutes that we get from all the various committees that we have, there's one that, I'm not going to say which one, but there's obviously a lot of consternation at a certain meeting because it was documented in the meeting minutes. One of the things that jumped out at me at that was that they had a couple of people that were on the phone participating in the meeting. So I'm going to take advantage of Bob not being able to talk because hopefully I'll get short answers. But for any of our official appointed committees from Open Meetings Act, can a participant participate via phone, you know, and still be counted as being present at that meeting?
No, that has not been our historical policy to allow that. And they certainly could not vote not being present at the meeting. They must be physically present.
Must be physically present, be counted as attending and voting. Now, it doesn't mean that if someone can't be there or they want to provide input, they could have someone call in.
If somebody can't be there and they want to provide input for something, but they, they're, if they are on the committee and they phone in, that also does not count toward a quorum.
Right, okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that. So because I think, I believe that's covered in the new commission handbook there that we have to pass down to all the committees. So hopefully we can avoid that in the future. Next, little pet peeve, and this is more for Rob, because his department does it the most. Using Facebook Live for announcements. I know a couple of members do it quite a bit to convey information about what's going on at their facility or during their event. So what I'm going to ask is maybe work with communications on establishing when it's appropriate to use as a communication method or not. For example, a couple of them that were up the last couple of days, they were talking about deadlines for signup for different things. And so if someone is just scrolling and they just see a video and they don't really care to watch the video, they'll scroll by versus seeing texts and that. And when I looked at that particular page, there is no other corresponding message saying a deadline was coming up and that. So maybe we could work on that of making sure they understand. I think it's great to show like, hey, things are going on at an event, things are happening. To use Facebook Live, it's very quick and easy. But if they still want to use video, they can record the video, post it, and include the information in text as well on media help going forward. Next thing, priority waste. One of the other communities had switched and they actually decided to take a more expensive contract rather than sticking with priority. And I thought it was funny, the representative for priority was saying, well, we never knew there was anything wrong. We know there's tons of things that are wrong. So I guess, and one of the things that I personally experienced in dealing with priority is that when I've sent them a complaint, I'll get the first automatic reply of not us. I turn around and say, nope, really was you. Nope, you really did miss. Here's the evidence. I drove by that night, it's still there, you hadn't picked it up. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we, there was a miscommunication, we'll get it. I think all those types of back and forth we have to have with their staff really do need to be documented. So I'm going to ask, since the city manager's office really needs to administer that contract. Because I think either you or Matt or both are on the bulk of the communication, regardless what council member's sending it in, to really start documenting, you know, not so much, you know, the actual event, but the reply from the corporate office where we have to do this constant back and forth with them. You know, we got this issue of, you know, who spilled the oil out of the truck in a condo association, right? Where the homeowner or association president's going back and forth with them. They've got to work to actually get to resolution and issues and just not say, not us. Keep pushing back until we actually have to force them and that. And the bulk of a lot of what they're coming up with, their contract doesn't allow them to refuse that and that. So it's also living up, they bought the contract, they got to live with the contract until it goes back out for bid again. So if you can work on what that tracking list would be and actually. So if you can work on what that tracking list would be and actually probably go back and, I know you, you're very busy with contract negotiations now and that, but maybe even go back and look at past emails and really document where we've had to do a lot of back and forth with priority to get something resolved. All right, okay. Matt, fun stuff. So first, yeah, congratulations to the community course, their spring show, let's go to the movies, that was yesterday. Great job. A lot of talented people, a great cast that they have. And I do want to, you know, give a shout out to Councilman Rabello when they had Mamma Mia with all the selection from ABBA. Councilman Rabello was singing along the whole way. When it got to Dancing Queen, I expected him to jump in the aisle and start joining it and that. So, but it was a great show. I know the three of us, we all enjoyed it. So congrats to them. Now, they are also going to be performing at the Veterans Memorial Ceremony on the Sunday Veterans Memorial Day at 9:00 AM at Veterans Memorial Park. They always perform at that ceremony, so it's another great way to see them. And I believe they are also opening concerts in the park on June 4th with the National Anthem at Veterans Memorial Park as well. So a couple of other ways to see our community course before they go into the summer. And as Councilman Russo is saying, a big thank you to the Lake Shore National Honor Society students who, you know, for planting 26 trees, worked their butts off the whole time. And we knocked it out in a little more than an hour is how fast they did it. And it was also working with, you know, myself, Councilman Russo, Mayor Walby, members of Parks and Rec, CDI, DPW, full city participation, working together with these students, planting 26 trees. And I do find it's funny, some of these other cities like, hey, we planted a tree. Here's 10 of us. We planted a tree. Look at all of us behind this tree. Yeah, we did 26 in an hour. So, but great shout out, great group of kids. And that, one of the guys that was with my group shows up, bright white t-shirt, bright white t-shirt and white socks, flip flops. And I said to him, bold fashion choice for tree planting. He left dirty. He didn't mind. He was a champ with it. So, but great shout out to them. And also to Anne Rancilio, who is their advisor that coordinates a lot of these volunteer activities for them. Just a great group of kids. And with that, our arboretum now stands at 255 total documented trees from 47 different species with that planning that we did on Arbor Day last Friday. So thanks to all the city staff, city council members that were there, and especially the National Honor Society of Lake Shore for helping us out. It was a great day at the park. This next one's from Shorewood Kuanis. This is a great program. They give away books to every elementary student in St. Clair Shores. So I took advantage and went to Princeton Elementary, which was my elementary, and I believe also Councilman Vitali went there as well. Spent the whole day there as they had every class come in and then for 15 minutes, they were to pick out their own book to take home with them that was theirs to have. And it was a great program put on by Shorewood Kuanis. Dr. Carl Papa, Sue Crowe from Kuanis members, they coordinate this at each of the elementary schools. And that's also with them in that top picture is Pam Nipa, who is the librarian, media specialist at Princeton. She did all the ordering and picking of the books and that. And so she had them out, you know, for kindergarten, first grade, we had one style of books from them. And then the books progressed as the ages went up. And it was just great for every group of kids coming in to be able to come in and pick their own book, get encouraged about reading. It was a great program that Shorewood Kuanis put together and over 600 kids walked out with a book that day at Princeton. So thank you to Shorewood Kuanis for sponsoring that. I had a great time being there. Councilman Rabello was there with Name the Muskrat Game, you know, to help the kids entertain while they're waiting their turn to go pick a book. So, but it was a great day and I think it's a great program Shorewood Kuanis does for all those students. And last, if you've seen all the red tulips pop up all around the city, that is courtesy of First State Bank. They donate tulips every fall per order of the chairperson, Lil Clayclown. They must be red tulips. She will only accept red tulips. It will be nothing but red tulips in the city, but that's Lil. And she says she's watching, so she can have fun with that. But First State Bank does that donation every fall. The Befication Commission plants them all around. We watch them come up every year. So this is a great donation by one of our local partners that we have, businesses in the city here. So thank you to them for that. And that is all.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick.
Thanks, Mayor. So you guys covered quite a bit there. So let me see what we have that you didn't cover. So first off, mark your calendars for the Optimus Club of St. Clair Shores. They're doing their third annual scholarship golf outing and that's going to be sponsored by Edward Jones. And it'll be Friday, July 11th at the St. Clair Shores Golf Club. There'll be a celebrity host, 8:00 AM registration, 9:00 AM shotgun. Let me give you a phone number if you're interested, 586-530-4203. Big shout out to Parks and Rec for their help in, in getting that thing scheduled. Also, talking with the folks, and this is a funny story, the folks over at the American House on Jefferson, I stopped in there because after my mother's 100th birthday, there was a lot of decorations left over and somebody said, take them over to American House. Well, it turns out they have three birthdays coming this year, so they're going to use all the decorations. Of course, while you're there, you can't help but get, you know, somebody will grab your ear and go, hey, by the way, June 20th, from 3:00 to 6:00 in the front of the building, they're doing something called the Longest Day and it's a, it's a celebration that's going to raise some money for Alzheimer's. Their, their goal this year is to raise about $4,000. So if you can go there and donate, they're going to have some food trucks. Barbecue Daddy, one of our favorites, will be there. Fly Dog Hot Dogs and Kona Ice. You can donate at the front desk there anytime and throughout May and June. And be sure to stop by their little pocket change jar. This is all to fight Alzheimer's disease. Again, that's the American House right on Jefferson. What is that, between 11 and 12, I think, right? Okay. Also, and you all are invited, everyone's invited, to the Opening Day St. Clair Shores Baseball Softball Association. That is Saturday, May 17th. Boy, that's a busy weekend as always. It's at Kite Monroe. Festivity start at 11:00 AM and, you know, the presentations and all the kids. You're invited to get there about 10:45 dignitaries if you want to sit on, on the field. Earlier start for all players and coaches, check with your manager or directors. And there's going to be a lot of fun happening out there, too. I really appreciate Trader Todd's, Todd in Virginia Sting, and, and of course Rick from BASF or BAS. The, it's a great lineup for the Wednesday concert, so we really appreciate you guys helping out. And obviously we want to thank Mike Agnello from Agnello Jewelers and the Little Blue Book and of course Pettiprint, our longtime, longtime sponsor. So let's talk a little bit about the library, very short on the library today. Join us on Tuesday, May 13th for the Friends Annual Meeting in the Library Meeting Room. All are welcome to participate in this meeting. It's at 6:30 PM where we will elect our 2025-2026 Board and review the end of the year report. Following directly at 7:00 PM, we'll have a guest speaker, Karen Dibis, author of Detroit Style Pizza, a Dough Town History. That should be good. That should be good. And then join the Zelinski Green Farmhouse Museum on May 10th from 1:00 to 4:00 and participate in a beginner-friendly weaving workshop. Registration can be done online, in person, or by phone. And then just remember, we are going to be renovating the library in the fall. More to come on that timeline as, as we get all those details. So believe it or not, it was shorter than Russo's. That's all I have.
Thank you. Item eight will be city manager's report. Mr. Lent.
Speaking of the Zelinski Greenhouse, the pre-con for the foundation work will be this Wednesday. So we'll be seeing that get started. Once that gets started, as everybody knows, then the roof would follow and we'll have to work with the fence, make sure we have every timing worked out.
Excellent. Thank you.
On the Briar House with the cats, we did meet with the nephew this afternoon, just to give a little bit of feedback. I know we had some pictures that were shared and some information that was given. He has purchased a new shed. That shed will be getting demolished. He has already got the paperwork for the permit. He'll be putting that in. So we'll be seeing a new shed out there. When the new shed gets built, there were also a lot of the debris that was out there. There's a ladder, there are some other tarps and that kind of stuff. That'll be getting put into the new shed, so the debris will also be being cleaned up. The nephew has also trapped a few of the female cats and got a vet to be able to neuter them. And he's also working with a private group, a private group, and has also been currently trapping as many of the females and clipping their ears and getting those neutered. So we have had some progress outside of Macomb County. Macomb County has trapped a few of the male cats and have got those neutered. So we have had some progress, I know, even though we've received some emails. But we are working on cleaning up the property, working with the nephew, working with the different individual groups. And the goal is, is to, you know, get everything neutered and stop the growth of that colony and relocate what we can.
Thank you. Item nine is audience participation. You have a five-minute timer. Views and opinions expressed under audience participation are those of the individual citizen only, not necessarily represent the views and opinions of Mayor, City Council, the city St. Clair Shores. Anyone like to speak? Yes, ma'am. We just need your name and the city you reside in, and then we'll have you.
Hi.
John Walters over there will show you where to sign in afterwards.
I signed there, but I don't know. I guess I wasn't at-
Yes, ma'am.
Thelma Socia, 23275 North Rosedale Court. I am here representing my sister, Jacqueline Welch, at 21909 Lang. We have a very large, old, old tree on the boulevard. We've requested it to be cut down many, many times. And somebody comes over and takes off this big branch right here. And that's it. It does hang over her home. I personally know that that tree is over 70 years old. It used to be my husband's grandmother's home. And it was there when he was a kid. One big storm and this thing is going to go down and it's going to hit her house. So I'd like somebody to address it.
Give me the address again, ma'am.
21909 Lang.
Okay.
Okay, second one. The house next door to me, a young couple lives there. We've had issues forever. The tree on the boulevard has a disease. We're getting leaves and flowers right now, but come six weeks from now, four to six weeks, it's going to be dropping leaves like it's the winter time, I mean, fall. The leaves do have stuff on them. You know that they're, they're, they're not healthy. It's killed three of my snow fountain cherries because it's airborne and it comes over to my trees and I've had to pull them out. Again, I've asked to have that tree taken down before, no avail. Or at least somebody come and check it and, and see the proof. A, a personal friend of mine is an arborist in the farms and I took it to him and I said, Jimmy, look at this. And Jimmy came back and said, this is disease. It's got to come down. I says, it's getting everything around you and it has. So that has to get addressed. Number three, real fast. Couple of weeks ago, driving down where the construction is on Jefferson and Nine, we like to support the restaurants in that, in that area. We consciously think to do that at least every other week. I had one day driving through, you know, big old pothole. There's no place to swerve because you only have one lane. And I had come home from Nino's and I called Seehole and I said, can somebody look at this? And next time I went out to go get my sister to take her to the doctor, the trucks were there filling up the potholes like an hour later. Thank you. And I know it wasn't my phone call. It was somebody else's. But perhaps we can look at maybe every single Monday or a day in the week or whatever, somebody driving through and making sure these holes are filled because we have nowhere to go. We have no place to swerve. And in the meantime, there goes my tire. So if we can take a look at that. It's, it's fairly good right now, but you know, the next rainstorm. But anyway, trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Ma'am, if you could sign in, if you don't mind, if you please sign in. Mr. Walters, could you just sign in? You signed in? Oh, I missed it. Okay, Virginia.
Hi, Virginia Carstervan from Trader Todd's Marina. But I'm here tonight to talk about Restaurant Week, which just happened last week. And I just want to thank everybody on the city council that supported the trolley program. I want to thank the Tifa Board for funding the trolley, the advertisement. I've heard back from several restaurants that really appreciated all of the support during Restaurant Week. We had two media hits. We were picked up by Channel 7 and Channel 4, both on air and online, an article in the Gross Point News and an article in the Sentinel. So we got lots of coverage and we were just really happy with the results. So wanted to say a great big thank you and of course, to all the residents who came out and supported. And Saturday night on the trolley was the most fun I've had in a long time. So thank you all for that.
Thank you. Anyone else before we come back to?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Big thank you to the ladies who preceded me. This is in fact, my first rodeo. Glad to see how this works. My name is Andrew Springer. I'm a resident of St. Clair Shores as of this past November. I'm also a veteran of the United States Marine Corps as well as a national service officer with a nonprofit organization called Disabled American Veterans. So a little bit about our organization and what we do. DAV is dedicated to a single purpose, which is empowering veterans to lead high-quality lives with respect and dignity. We accomplish this by ensuring that veterans and their families can access the full range of benefits available to them. We fight for the interests of America's injured heroes on Capitol Hill, educating the public about the great sacrifices and the needs of veterans transitioning back to civilian life. We are first and foremost a service organization, meaning that we provide representation free of charge, again, free of charge, to veterans and their families in pursuit of their benefits that they have earned through their service. Okay? I'm coming here tonight to inform you as well as my new city that on Monday, May 19th, from 6:00 to 8:30 PM at the Knights of Columbus, I do believe that is 25003 Little Mac, we'll be hosting an information seminar as well as a claims clinic. So we're going to talk about DAV. It's going to be me talking, so hopefully it won't be too long-winded. We're going to talk about what we do and then we're going to hold a membership drive. Historically, our chapter 119 has been a vital and active part of the St. Clair Shores community. Unfortunately, as with most service organizations, things age, people age, and unfortunately, veterans pass away. So my hope with this event is to spread the word of our service organization to members of my generation, the post 9/11 generation. St. Clair Shores is a lovely, vibrant community filled with young people, which is super welcoming. And we just want to let them know what we're about. So once again, that is Monday, May 19th at the St. Clair Shores Knights of Columbus from 6:00 until 8:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we go to mayor's comments? We'll go back to mayor's comments, just a quick, two, two items. The first one is, I was talking a little bit earlier about social district and the barricades. I just wanted the residents to know that we have put up barricades in that area. They will be up from May through October. We have just trying to do kind of protect the area a little bit more so that in case there was some type of issue that maybe we'd have cars that were blocked. We already have each, each side usually blocked with, with vehicles, but we wanted to make sure the sidewalks and some of the ways into the Ninehamac District would be protected regarding any type of vehicle. So you see those out there, they will, they will be here. We kind of tentatively put them up there and then we haven't filled them with water to see if we could move them around and we were evaluating them and then we're going to, again, fill them up with water and they will be left throughout the duration between May through October. And then item, item two is just, you know, it, it occurred, we had a meeting on the 21st and we did, I did not mention it, and it was regarding racial slurs that were over at Lakeview that occurred on April 14th. And many times this body, and me specifically, we, you know, between the school district and the city, many times they handle their issues and we handle our issues. But I felt that I should say something regarding it because, you know, racism is unacceptable, right? It's unacceptable in any form, whether it's in a school district or anywhere in a, a building or a home and that. So I, again, I just wanted to highlight that if anyone thought, because maybe I didn't bring it up on the 21st, which was the last council meeting, which was several days after it had occurred, that we would think racism is acceptable. It is not acceptable, right? There is, it, we condemn racism in, in all forms and, you know, all students have the forms, and, you know, all students have the right to be respected and valued wherever they are in this community. So again, you know, I know it's, it happened on the 14th, but I felt that maybe I hadn't said something on the 21st, and I wanted to make sure that I, I condemned any racism that would occur in this community, and obviously anywhere, but I'm St. Clair Shores. So I just wanted to highlight that. So with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, support.
By Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Good night.